Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off of vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. The meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you give us freely. Father, thank you for the opportunity for us to know you and to serve you, Father, in all things. We pray and ask for your direction and guidance to go through the business at hand. Father, we pray that everything is done in accordance with your will and we give you all the thanks and the glory in advance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We do not have an in-person update from the Emergency Management Agency today, but the Director has asked me to give some information, so I turn it over to City Clerk Nelson to give us that report.
The main thing that Ms. Gaither wanted us to make the public aware of is the drive-through clinic that will be held on Thursday, February the 4th, and that will take place at the venue on George Wallace Drive. The most important thing to know about the drive-through is that it is not for anyone but people who receive their first dose of vaccination on January the 7th. They think that it involves about 500 people or so. The hours are going to be 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And people, if you're coming to the vaccination, you need to bring the card that you were given when you got your first dose on January the 7th. And they're asking that you only come for your designated timeframe, to not come early. And they've got it divided according to the last name, how it comes in the alphabet. A and B is from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. C and D are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. E through G is 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. H through J is 11:00 a.m. until noon. K through M is noon to 1:00 p.m. N through R is 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And S through T is 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then U through Z is 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't think there are any questions from anyone. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting that was held on January the 26th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of January the 22nd to the 28th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Unfinished business, we have none today. We have a resolution appointing members and reappointing members to the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority. And this is Bethana Marshall Mashburn and Chris Robertson and the reappointment of Scott Heisman and Karen Matcham for the term ending December 31st, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Coussa River Team Trail, and this is for the city to sponsor a series of four fishing tournaments between March and October of 2021 at Coussa Landing, and this is including a two-day seasonal finale tournament, and the amount is $12,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Do we get a second? Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a resolution authorizing agreement with the Crappy Masters and Company, and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament on March the 6th and May the 22nd, 2021 at Coussa Landing, and the amount is $500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with the American Bass Anglers, and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament on June the 12th, 2021 at Coussa Landing, and the amount is $1,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I can say something. I know a lot of people ask me why we get so many fishing tournaments, because we have a great place. And you may think it's not a big deal, but a lot of people will come here and they'll stay for a week looking for the fish in some of the tournaments. They bring their families, they go shopping, they go out to eat, and it's a good revenue generator for us. And it just keeps coming and coming, so we're glad to have them come here.
Okay.
Oh. Abbott.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yes, Madam President, I have a resolution that I'd like to have read in as a first reading today. This is a resolution to not grant the economic incentives for the Pilgrim's Pride Industrial Development Project. I'll read the resolution. Whereas Alabama Code 40-9B1 grants the Gadsden City Council authority to review and approve abatement of taxes related to industrial development projects within the city of Gadsden, and whereas the Gadsden City Council reaffirms that existing legal procedures and standards should be followed to objectively consider the cost and benefit of potential industrial developments located within the city limits, and whereas the Gadsden City Council has full confidence in the ability of current economic development professionals employed by the city, and whereas the Gadsden City Council recognizes the tremendous existing economic impact of the poultry industry throughout Etowah County and the surrounding areas, and whereas the Gadsden City Council recognizes the essential value of the poultry industry in our daily lives through the production of many commonly-used consumer goods, and whereas the Gadsden City Council is grateful for the opportunity to consider industrial development projects of such magnitude as the proposed Pilgrim's Pride facility, and whereas the Gadsden City Council remains committed to supporting the recruitment of industry for the benefit of our citizens, and whereas the Gadsden City Council finds that industry, while potentially beneficial to the economy of the area, also may have the potential to negatively impact public infrastructure, air and water quality, property values, and enjoyment of nearby properties, and whereas the Gadsden City Council finds that even positive, desirable, or necessary industrial facilities may negatively impact our community if not properly regulated or cited, and whereas the Gadsden City Council currently has no confidence that the aforementioned issues of concern, as well as the concerns of the general public, can be effectively mitigated in a timely manner, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Gadsden, Alabama as follows. Although Pilgrim's Pride Corporation has not yet presented to this council a request for economic incentives, the Gadsden City Council hereby determines that it is, one, not in favor of the proposed project's proximity to the municipal airport, and, two, not in favor of abatement of municipal taxes for this project.
Okay. I move that we consider this resolution today. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay, this vote will be for unanimous consent to immediately consider the resolution today. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
We've already voted.
That was for unanimous consent to bring out today.
Okay. I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Madam President, I would like to make a standing motion to continue this indefinitely.
I have a, this is under discussion.
Okay, you're going to discuss, that's fine.
At one of our council meetings, it was stated that the Alabama National Guard would be impacted by this plant coming. And so with due diligence, this came to us from the State Military Department, the Joint Force Headquarters, the Alabama National Guard, January the 26th, 2021, and the subject is the Alabama National Guard's position regarding the Gadsden Animal Rendering Plant. On December the 1st, 2020, Deputy Commander LT Robert Griggs, Fort McClellan Trainee Center, emailed Colonel Lee Desmond, the National Guard Construction Facilitator Manager Officer, about Gadsden effort to place an animal rendering plant to the Fort Clearance Ray in Gadsden. The email noted that there were opposition groups with significant concerns, including smell, and that the plant would be within location of one mile of Fort Ray Martin Air Station, and that these installations would be, would likely be impacted. Colonel Desmond sent the email to Colonel JR Bass and others, and it was decided that the Alabama National Guard would contact the Alabama Department of Commerce for guidance as to what, if any, position the Alabama National Guard might take. The Alabama National Guard made contact with the Governor's Office and the Department of Commerce. As a result of that contact and information received, it was decided on December the 8th, 2020, that the Alabama National Guard would take no public position on the matter and certainly not oppose the project. Number three, if any person, civilian or active guardman, has made any public statement other than what is stated above, it was made without our permission. The Alabama National Guard has no opposition to the plan. The Alabama National Guard understands that Governor Ivey and the Alabama Department of Commerce supports this plant locating in Gadsden, and we will not participate in any public hearings nor make statements of non-support. And the fourth point is that you can contact Colonel Terry Travis, and he has his email address and he has his phone number. And this is from Cheryl E. Garten, Major General of the Alabama National Guard, the Adjunct General. Any other discussion?
I think we have a motion, Madam President.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to continue this indefinitely.
Any discussion on that? Then we have a roll call vote?
That was for the, I asked for the roll call vote, for the vote only, not the primary.
That motion that, that motion that he made.
We had a motion on the table.
Yeah, that motion that he made supersedes that main motion, according to Robert Rules of Order.
Okay, this vote will be for continuing indefinitely, for an indefinite continuance of the item. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy?
No.
Councilwoman Back?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
No.
Councilwoman Reed?
Yes.
The motion does carry to continue indefinitely.
Any department reports? Committee, boards? Comments by the Mayor and Council. Mayor, you have any comments? Councilwoman Will?
No. Oh, I do have actually one, one thing. I did want to comment on the sad news that we received this week regarding Ms. Gertie Low. We, we have lost a giant in the community, and I do want to send condolences out to her family and all of those who knew her and appreciate her contribution to the community. Again, we'll continue to pray for that family and, and continue to console them during this very difficult time. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, I want to reiterate what Councilman Will said, sending my condolences to the Low family, to Chief Jack. Sorry to hear that. Anything I could do, just let me know. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Back?
I also want to offer condolences to the Low family, long history of contributing to our city and our county, especially with children. And Ms. Low is certainly going to be missed, and I hope there's people, I'm sure there are people that are going to step in to, to pick up the slack. She can't be replaced, but I'm sure that there'll be people that'll keep her summer program going, the summer enrichment program, which is so important to, to the children in Gadsden. Also, one of, we approved $14,000 in fishing today. That's kind of a constant theme. Every week we are endorsing fishing tournaments and things that come to our city, and that's part of that large volume of tourism that comes to Gadsden, so we're very proud to be a part of doing that. Want to talk a little bit about resolution. First of all, I get a lot of calls and emails from my constituents in District 4, and I have told them, but I want to say it publicly, I am listening to the constituents in District 4 and will certainly be with them and adhere to their wishes, okay? That's just first and foremost. That's who I'm initially responsible to, are the voters in District 4. Also, listening to everybody, I mean, it's hard not to listen to everybody. I've mentioned up here before that I'm doing my research, and a lot part of my, a large part of my research is from the advanced Etowah page and the opposition to the rendering plant page. There's a lot of research there. It's been very helpful in learning about a rendering plant that I knew nothing about two months ago. And, you know, the opposition that we're seeing here, this is democracy. This is really good. This is what we need in our city and our county, and it's, and it's exciting to see that it's alive and that it's well. It's, the what, the action that was taken today is not an ending by, by any stretch. What you're seeing is an industrial development works that, from, from the inside, that you typically don't get to see. Probably in the history of industrial development, this hasn't happened this, this way. That process has kind of been interrupted by the discovery of, of information, and so that brought it out to the open. So you're seeing what typically happens over a five or six-month period in every industrial development project that comes to Etowah County. This isn't a one-off, and this isn't something that's done only the way that it's being conducted now. This is what happens all the time in industrial recruitment. These are the steps that are involved and the work that goes. It's, it's a fluid motion, and, and so it's, we're getting to see that real, real time. And, and I realize it's frustrating. It's also frustrating for me to have to, to be a part of it in the way that it's, that it's turning out. But we have to be careful. What we do now is going to set precedence for the future. And so while you might have an opinion on the process now for this particular project in five or 10, 20 years, when there's different people sitting up here, that precedence is going to be in place, and so that could come back to, to bite you. And so we have to be careful how this precedence affects us. And so we don't want to make a regretful decision on, on that. So, and the resolution, I mean, everybody needs to understand that when an outside agency brings a resolution or outside council or a, or a county commission, that's, that's fine. That's perfectly within their rights as part of the democracy process that I was speaking of earlier. But when this council does it, when we're sitting here and we're going to be entertaining a possible tax abatement, then it has a different meaning. And you need to know that it's a non-binding resolution. It has no legal authority and has, has no, no legal precedence on whether or not something can or cannot come. So for us to do that is almost a misleading to everybody to say, because you're going to, if, if we approve the resolution and you walk out of here thinking we won or this battle's over, that's not, that's, that's not true and that's not accurate, because we could easily come back in a week or two and approve a tax abatement because the resolution is not legally binding. It is not a, a legal document. So I'm just being truthful. I, I believe in transparency and I believe in, in being truthful, and I'm just telling you the truth, that that's not a binding document from the City Council of Gadsden. It's just an opinion paper, basically. What this has brought to my attention is that Etowah County has a workforce development problem, challenge, I should say. We have around 3,000 open jobs that I've seen reported, and we don't have people to fill those jobs. So, and we've had, you know, I've had these same comments a lot, that a lot of you have had, is that we need to attract certain kind of industries to Gadsden, like Huntsville Technology Jobs, Birmingham Healthcare Jobs. The reality is, we don't have the workforce in Etowah County to fill all those jobs. So what we have to do is, we've got to go back to the beginning and we've got to start developing that workforce. And I think we have to have a program that attacks this process when children, students are in the sixth grade, and we need to start there, and we need to identify, and we need to train, and we need to educate our workforce, and then we'll have the workforce that can fill the jobs that we want to have that come, and, and the careers, not just jobs, but careers that we want to have for our city and our county. So cart might be a little bit in front of the horse, but we need to be careful with that, because I see the pain from the current business owners that they can't fill their current jobs. And so here we are recruiting new industry to, that will employ 16, 90 people, however many, and they can't fill their jobs. So I, I feel their frustration and I respect that. I respect their ability to, to do what they're doing in, in the opposition. If I was in their place, I think I'd be doing the same thing. So workforce development is something we do need to work on as a county. We need to work with all the, our cities in the county, with our county commission, and, and we need to do that. And you'll be hearing more about that in, in the, in the coming weeks, maybe in the, in the coming days. You know, we have to have a vision for that. We have to come together and create the workforce that will attract the industry. You don't attract industry and then hope that you have the workforce. You have, you have to get that first, and then you can go after the industry that you want to attract. So I know that's a lot to unpack. This recruitment or this dealing with Pilgrim's Pride Rendering Plant is not a finished deal. What you saw today, please don't leave here thinking that this is over. Please don't leave here thinking that this is done, because it's not done. There's still many steps that have to be completed before we'll ever receive a proposal. We have not received a proposal from anybody about a rendering plant. The City Council has not received anything. So again, it's, it's, it's something that we are working on. The right people that are employed to do that are, are in that process, and so that's, that's how it, that's how it works. And, and if, if we were to say what this resolution says today, I don't want you to leave here thinking that that's, it's not a binding piece of paper or a document. It's just an opinion. So it doesn't really do anything. It doesn't accomplish what you want to accomplish. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I, hmm, there's just so much here. First of all, I want to start out with the non-binding resolution part. I told everybody in this town that this was a non-binding resolution. Everybody in town knew it was. Nobody seemed to have a problem with the non-binding resolution part when one was introduced without the knowledge of anybody on this council about preserving that monument out there. That was a non-binding resolution. Didn't do anything to protect that monument legally, but we passed it. Everybody on this council voted on it. But for some reason, we don't get the same luxury here on a non-binding resolution. As far as the, the purpose of this resolution, here's what I reject, okay? I have a real problem with the interpretation of municipal code that says, I as a city councilman cannot be involved or informed about any industrial development recruitment projects until all the permits are passed, all the designs are done, and then somebody in, presents me with an economic incentive package. Well, what if they don't introduce? And I firmly believe that's what's happening here, people. Make no mistake about it. What I believe happened in here, and I did not believe that until I came into this room today, but I see very clearly, I'm not a sucker. I'm not going to fight somebody else's fight for them that can fight it for themselves. I'm tired of getting punched in the teeth over this, okay? What I think is happening, because there's no other logical reason why we wouldn't send a message to everybody involved, since we're not allowed to be a part of the conversation, because nondisclosure agreements and confidentiality, what, what tool do I have as a city councilman to try to give my input on a major economic development deal in the city of Gadsden? If I can't be briefed into any of the meetings and I can't pass a non-binding resolution that just says, hey, guys, heads up, we think y'all might be going in the wrong direction here based on the thousands of responses I've got from my council, then what, what is, what's the purpose of this council? We just have to sit aside and do nothing until somebody maybe or maybe doesn't bring us an economic incentive package. And I believe that is an incredibly limited definition of what a council person is supposed to do here. And so that's the reason I introduced this resolution, because it was the only opportunity that I had as a councilman to deliver a message publicly that said, I think this project is going in the wrong direction. And now I believe, after this, that there are essentially three or four individuals driving this entire project, and I believe their ultimate goal is to pass it, and, and that's my personal opinion based on this, because there's no reason why. I drafted this resolution with help and, and precedent from other resolutions from similar communities that were in a similar situation. This was a well-worded resolution that acknowledged everyone's concerns on both sides. It acknowledged that we have real concerns about how all of this back and forth is going to affect our industrial recruitment. That is a valid concern by the people who are on the other side of the opposition here. The people who are in favor of this have a valid concern that it's going to have a long-term negative impact on our industrial recruitment, and they're probably right. It is. It's been a messy process. But here's what I'll have to say. All I have to say is, if everybody in this room knows that 99% of the people in their community don't want to have this thing and we're delaying the vote on it, it's either intellectually dishonest, or it's just not very effective leadership by this council, in my opinion. And so that's the reason, that's the reason I introduced the resolution. I wanted this council to be on the record saying, hey, not that we're adamantly opposed to all rendering plants and they should all be buried in the river, or, sorry, poor choice of words, Justin, that they should all be burned at the stake. I'm not saying that. These places have a, a role in our community. But what you got to understand, where we're shooting ourselves in the foot, to me, is you really have to go back and take a history lesson on Gadsden. You know, Gadsden became a major metropolitan area because of our logistics capabilities. We had a river that would access the Gulf Coast. We have railroads that were coming through our town headed out west, because it turns out that people who first built the railroads didn't like the idea of having to cut across the Smoky Mountains. So they came down and went around the Smoky Mountains. Well, guess what? We're at the foothills. We're right here, where the land flattens out. So we had a lot of logistics opportunities that built this community. Well, the result of that was, we built plants downtown in our city center by the riverfront. Well, what happened? Everybody packed up and moved to the country, because they didn't want to live by a plant. Well, now here we are in the smallest county in Alabama, and we've got everybody living in the country where you'd normally build your industrial plants, and nobody wants to build them downtown. to build them downtown because we're trying to develop it. So what are we doing? You know, when you talk about workforce development, I served on the Workforce Development Council of the State of Alabama for several years, have been all over this state, going to conferences about workforce development, meetings about it. Here's my problem. We continue to chase industrial development jobs here that we have an increasingly difficult time accommodating. And so my point is, we're going to continue to get put back in this place. And again, I'm not placing that blame on anybody, it's just the reality of our community. We have a very small landmass community, and so these things are more impactful than they are when they're built in a community of 8,000 or 1,800, where you see some of these other rendering plants being built. It's a different ballgame here. And what I thought was happening was an actual genuine exchange, where we were going to have a decorum and a nuanced conversation about the pros and cons of this, but it's increasingly apparent to me that this is 100% politics, and I don't know what I'm doing here, I don't know what my value is here, if, if I can't have a voice in a conversation like this. But like I said, I reject the idea that I just have to sit here and can't know about anything until some project is presented to me and then I vote on it. That's not the way it's supposed to work.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Reed?
I've got a whole lot of notes over here to say. Talking about politics is like preaching to the choir over here. Last time you did that was eloquent, was the best talks I ever heard in my life, and you went right out that door and told them you were going to vote no. Now, don't talk politics to me. That's 50/50, and I said it to you before, send to you again. It's just fact.
I appreciate that.
If I want to sway this crowd right here, I could say the same thing, but it's not the way to transact business.
But you didn't.
It's my time. You transact business when you work for the process. IDA, State of Alabama, we've heard it before, comes right on down the line to IDA, to the county, to us. They introduce it, and by the way, we've already killed that recruiting, all this yin-yang and, and sign thing and putting my name on billboards and all this kind of thing. Ain't going to get it. It's not going to get it, because you've got to stick with the process and let it work. Invicta, I'm sorry, ma'am, but I'm going to tell you what, you ain't been here long enough to know, okay? Invicta, fair, all, all the industries in this town that were brought in by IDA, we missed Honda, we missed the racetrack, but they did it in a process that was legal, and by the way, confidential. Confidential. Follow the process. I'm going to tell this council one more time, the first day we met together. I said, do not, under any circumstances, get involved where there's money and land involved. Don't do it, because I was here when, I think, four went to jail, not necessarily because they were guilty, but they hung them. They hung them. And I'm going to tell you all out there, you better watch the same thing. Now, in saying that, I'm going to read you something from IDA that we got this morning. And this will bring it home to you to be kind of honest and be kind of confidential in what you're saying and doing up here, especially up here. On this project, pilgrims, we have not been afforded the opportunity to proceed through all of those steps in an honest and fair process. To be perfectly honest, the reason that is, working documents from our office were stolen. They were stolen. I'm reading what he said. Now, you can take it, you can eat it or whatever you want to do with it. And share it with the public before many of the council were even aware of anything going on. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I don't know what the value is when you steal resolutions that are of a confidential matter. That's up to the courts, not me. But I'm going to protect this council and say, don't get involved. Please don't get involved. It's a sad thing to see your friends go off to jail, and you know they're not guilty of anything real bad. But on technicalities, if you're standing next to the man that does it, you're as guilty as he is. Now, I tell you, I'm going to end this thing, and y'all can do what you want to out there. I'm going to watch the process when it gets to the end. If I think it's no, I'll vote no. If I think it's yes, I'll vote yes. I'll vote my conscience and the way it ought to be for the city of Gadsden, and not for little cities around here that are trying to run us, Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Board, you name it, putting out resolutions too early. It hadn't even gone through the process. And yes, I'm talking about the airport, too, when you lean forward, I'm talking about the airport. All that kind of mess, crazy. I'm going to get down to what's really important to me, because the rest of it right now isn't. Johnny Cannon and his wife sits right here, both diagnosed with COVID last week. I've been in contact with him every day, and I've watched him go down, 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 down. Oxygen levels, sick, can't get out of the bed, can't move. That's important to me to remember that. So I'm going to say, Johnny, you text me this morning, and you said it was even worse than yesterday. I'm saying to you, son, we're we, all the way, everybody up here is, I know, and anybody without any feeling at all out there that knows about COVID can understand the situation. Thank you.
The only thing that I have, have to say is that to vote on anything now would just be voting on a blank check. We don't have anything from Pilgrim to vote on. And to me, this is about money, it's about control, it's about power, it's about not being truthful. And I'll read the last statement that I got from a resident of Gadsden as to the real reason, and this was a statement that was made at the ADM meeting, verbatim. With the diverse crowd that's going to be hired up there, now I see this as a multiple occasion that they come into this little quiet town like this, and the crime rate goes up on the rise. Might not be so much the employees, but employees' friends, whatever, they come down, they say, okay, they see nice cars or motorcycles in the yard or a nice house, and they would do a home invasions. There are multiple reasons why there are people out there that don't want the plant, but we haven't gotten anything. We did get something from Cook, and it was kind of strange to me, or I didn't understand why Antiva, or Antiva, we just gave them a tax rebate of $150,000, and then they sent us a letter saying they wasn't for the rendering plant, why they didn't say that before they asked for a tax abatement. So we need to just follow what we're supposed to do and do the right thing. I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.